Good evening, everyone. Thank you guys for being here tonight. Today is June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Our thoughtful today is greatness is not, is not found in possession, power, position, or prestige. It is discovered in goodness, humility, service, and character. That's William Arthur Ward. I want to go ahead and officially call this meeting into order tonight. Tonight, I'm going to ask if Commissioner Mason would lead us in our prayer. And I'm going to ask Commissioner Sanders if he would lead us in our pledge tonight. Thank you guys for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let us all bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us back to this place one more time. As we bless your name and honor your name and give your name the praise. God, as we enter into this meeting, God, we ask that you would allow your spirit to come into the midst. And God, that as we move forward in doing the county business, God, that we would do it in unity and love and compassion. And God, we just thank you for all that you've done for Newton County and all that you're about to do. And we give you all the kingdom, honor, and the glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Again, thank you guys for being here. Commissioners, juvenile, the juvenile judges did forget. They had something that was very pressing to go on, go on the consent agenda tonight. I'd like to amend the agenda to add, you do have them in front of you on your, on your desk. Juvenile, you have a packet. There you go. That's a, that's an extremely thick packet there. We want to make that J, nine J. Nine J. Nine K would be request an approval of guardian and litum for the family treatment court. Nine K. And next, request an approval for agreement of services for, for a court reporter for Newton County Juvenile Court. That is nine L. Guys, I seek a motion that we approve the agenda with those changes, please. Thank you, sir. It has been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero. Thank you so much. Next on the agenda is citizen comments. This is an opportunity that will allow citizens to come up and make comments. If you would, please state your name and your address for the record, please. You have three minutes to do so. You may come at this time. It's agenda topics only. Agenda topics only. Thank you. Next, Chairman report. I don't have anything. Mr. Kerr, you have anything?
Yeah, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We got a few slides here for you. If you'll bring up that first slide for us, Brian. I will be brief. Next slide, please. First one is employee population data. You can see we've had three new hires and fifteen separations during this past month. Building permits, we've had one commercial, the primary residential moving back up. We had thirty-six during this past month. And the work orders by district, you can see there, they're spread out. There you go. Thank you. Also, you can see there the El Mig. These are the roads that we have paved. Johnson Road in District Three, Northwood Oak Court, Oak Hill Circle, Dove Point. And then other projects that we've been working on, Public Works is the FFA Camp entrance. And we're continuing to work on the tree removal and sidewalk repair in District Five. COVID snapshot, you can see there the number of reported cases that we've had in Newton County in the last seventy-eight days. Total number of deaths in the county. I did hear disturbing, some disturbing news today, which is that nationwide, I think we have surpassed six hundred thousand, which is close to the number of people who died of the flu epidemic in nineteen eighteen. So, still, although we are, the number of new cases are dropped, have dropped significantly. And instead of the thousands of new cases daily, it's way down into the hundreds now. So, we are making positive moves with the vaccinations. And you can see on this next page, you can see our positivity rate is down to point four percent. Zero point four percent. So, we are moving in the right direction, and that gives you the breakout there. All of this information, by the way, is available on our website or on the Gwinnett Rockdale Newton County website. And you can see our vaccination data here. The people that, with one dose at least, thirty-five thousand, and that accounts for about thirty, a third of our population. So, we are continuing to get those doses. We do have a max vaccination center at GPTC. That's open Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. And hopefully, you'll be able to take advantage of that. There's always the vaccinations that are available at many of the local drugstores as well as the health center. Couple of things we want to make you aware of, a groundbreaking at the, one of our new towers for nine-one-one, which will be up on, at the fire station, Fire Station Number Nine on Mountain Zion Road. This will be a day after tomorrow at eleven. And then we will have, on June twenty-fourth at eleven, we're going to have a ribbon cutting at Fire Station Number Eight, which is on Gum Creek Road, also in Oxford. And this is a picture from the District Three Cleanup Day, all the folks there who showed up to help clean up the area, some of the area there in District Three. This is on June twelfth. And here's some more pictures of some of the people who volunteered to help out. Had about fifty volunteers, so it was a good turnout. And another cleanup will be District One Service Day, and this is at Saturday on June twenty-sixth. So, that is a week from, week from this Saturday, yes, or this coming Saturday. Commissioner Edwards is a district and the meet at Al Covey High School. So, if you're interested, this is also on our website and contact info and all the contact. Keep Newton beautiful. And you'll see the phone number there. And last slide, and that's all I have for this evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Henderson. Yes, Lord. I mean, we're, he's very appreciative of the new COVID site. And I just, also just want to add that if you know somebody who want to be taken in Monday, Wednesday, or Friday, they can call me personally, or my, to my cell, and I'll take you. And the reason why I'm just trying to take care of anybody and everybody that I could. I recently had, had my sister pass, and she's buried in Mount Zion Cemetery in Oxford. And she was waiting on the Johnson and Johnson, her and her husband, and guess where they had? It was a hiccup day, you know, it stalled. And she didn't, was unable to get the shot right then. In between them clearing the Johnson and Johnson, she caught COVID and, and she passed. And so, I don't want that to happen to anybody else. So, call me, seven-seven-oh-eight-nine-six-three-eight-two-six. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Kerr. Guys, next is consent agenda. I seek a motion of approval, please. Can I get a second, please? Thank you, sir. It has been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? All in favor? You got a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. But it does pass at five-zero. But we do want to recognize, let's see here, where we at? Commissioner Edward has an appointment to the water and sewer board tonight. Is he appointment here tonight?
I don't know if Ms. Leanne Barrett is here tonight. I don't believe, she's, she's a reappointment. I just want to take this opportunity to thank her for her service. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And also Commissioner Henderson has an appointment to D-FAC. Also, is he appointment here tonight?
Reverend Russell? No, no, he's not. He's been on there for, I think, I've been elected for on twenty-three years. He's been on there about twenty, twenty years. And, and so, I, when I spoke to him, he had recently been a little underwhelming. I won't say sick. And so, no, he's not here.
Thank you. We want to thank them both for their willingness to serve this community and, and thank you again. And that motion did pass five-zero. Next on the agenda is item number ten. Board discussion and consideration of a master lease agreement with the State Properties Commission for Department of Justice. The use of Cousins Community Center finalized the, the existing rent with an escalating annual rent for up to three renewal terms and confirmed that the parties respected rights and obligations. I think that's Mr. Kerr.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What you have before you is a multi-year lease with the Department of Juvenile Justice. They have occupied this space at Cousins Center over there for a number of years. And the, when the county purchased that building, we did decide to continue having them as a tenant. And this will cover three years. And you'll note in there that there is a graduated rental, a rental for the space. And this does, but this lease agreement does cover that period of time. So, we would ask that the board approve it. It has been through legal review. And so, we'd like for the board to approve this.
Thank you. I seek a motion. It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Edwards. Uh, Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Chairman. Is, is, this is not, I'm totally counterintuitive. We sit down and we talked about the, okay. So, I just wanted to be sure. And if you could, if you would, Ms. Megan, could you give me a copy of, of those notes that you took? Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor? I think it passes five to zero. Next on the agenda is a task order proposal for project management services for extension program management at the Yellow River Trails. Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Yellow River Trail Project is one of the approved SPOS projects. It was budgeted for one point three million dollars, and this is to begin putting that trail system in. This contract that you, this agreement that you have before you is for the management, the project management services to include the development of the RFP, the design phase management, any land acquisition management that may be needed. We're probably going to need to acquire some land possibly from the school system. And then to go through the project bid and award process as well as the construction oversight. And the total for the project for this agreement is fifty-nine thousand nine hundred twenty dollars. And we ask that the board approve this agreement at that amount.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion. Thank you, sir. Can I get a second, please? Thank you. It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? I think it passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is item number twelve, our monthly financials with Ms. Brittany White.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, I will be presenting the May twenty-twenty-one financials. May is the eleventh month of our fiscal year. So, that should be trending roughly around ninety-one percent of our revenues and expenditures. So, I'll start with our general fund revenues. To date, our general fund revenues, we have brought in eighty-two point nine, or eighty-two point nine million, which does put us at a hundred and eight percent of our revenues. However, I will mention, we have had two unexpected unbudgeted revenues to come in the budget this year that comes roughly around seven point four million. So, those are one-time revenues that we did see in this budget that we will not see in future year budgets. So, that's why we are trending higher than our budgeted revenues right now. This graph shows our revenues for the year by month, and then it shows our actual, year-to-date actual versus our year-to-date budget. Our general fund expenditures for the year, we're at sixty-two point eight for our actuals, which puts us at eighty-one point seven five percent. So, we are trending a little bit lower than what our budget, our budgeted expenditures are. This graph shows our expenditures for each year of, or each month of the year, and then our actuals to budgeted amounts. And our general fund totals, so far for the year, we are at twenty million over our expenditures. But usually, June is one of our higher expenditure months just due to the fact that our fiscal year does stay open longer so that we can make sure to account for everything in the proper year. Our enterprise funds, our revenue to date for the water fund is nine million. Our expenditures for the date, for year-to-date is five point nine. Our solid waste fund, the revenues for the year, seven point five million. Their expenses are four point four million. And our Gaethers fund, the revenues for the year are three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, and their expenses are two hundred and twenty-five thousand. We have two current SPOS still open. We have the two thousand eleven SPOS. So, we have two projects still open in the two thousand eleven SPOS, Fire Station Eight, which should be wrapped up here within the next month. And then we also have Historic Jail Project. So, there's currently one point one million remaining in that SPOS. The two thousand seventeen SPOS, we currently are working on several of the projects in this SPOS. The current balance in that SPOS is nine point four million. Our expenditure, our revenues for the two thousand seventeen SPOS have been coming in higher than the projections. So, we're currently trending roughly thirteen million over what the projections were. And our impact fee fund currently has three point three million in the fund balance. And that wraps up my presentation, so I'll be happy to take any questions.
Any questions, Commissioner? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I know she's, Gaethers, how much in this budget have we contributed to Gaethers?
In this current, FY twenty-one budget?
Yes. And, and the reason why I should question, because once I was told it was two hundred thousand dollars, and I asked again, they said it was a hundred thousand dollars. So, I'm just trying to figure out which, you know.
Give me one second.
And I'm sorry.
No, you're coming. That's what I got it for. Okay. So, for this year, the operating transfer in from the general fund for the Gaethers portion is eighty-seven thousand. And then the operating, or excuse me, that's for the factory Shoals portion. The operating transfer in for the general fund for the Gaethers portion is two oh nine. So, that's year-to-date. The budgeted amounts for factory Shoals is ninety-five thousand two hundred and twenty-six. And the budget amount for Gaethers is two hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and eleven.
One last question. I may just, I need to go along. The factory show, I mean, you, you told me, I think you were saying, excuse me. You were saying that we were paying for a person down there and the house. Is there any type of security in there, or we paying it also for the amount of money that we, that we putting in?
The, the security is, that we have is provided for by the caretaker that we have there. And then we do close off the parking area over there at night. We have a gate that we, we close off over there. But the reality is there's still a lot of people who can, you know, go around the gate and tend to get down in to the river down there.
Commissioner Sanders?
Lord, you said the caretakers. That's someone's expound on that, exploring with the care.
Yeah, we have, I think actually the position is open right now, but we do have a, did have an employee that actually resided onsite. There was an existing house there when the county was given the property. And so, we had a caretaker who has lived there to take care of the park and to keep up the campgrounds and all of that there. But he actually did live onsite.
Thank you. Brittany, you need a, a motion?
Not for the financials, but I do have the budget transfer.
Okay.
Tonight, there is a budget transfer in your agenda packet. And this budget transfer is coming to the board because we are asking to increase the revenue. So, when we increase revenues, that does have to come to the board for approval. So, this situation, there was a few items that were stolen from the recreation department several months back. And we received a reimbursement check from the insurance. So, we're just asking to recognize the insurance check that we received to be able to purchase a tractor which was stolen. So, we're increasing the reimbursement of damaged property. In return, we're also increasing the line item for other equipment. Are there any questions?
Any questions, guys? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I guess this is to the Lord or the Chairman. What are we putting in place to prevent them from maybe stealing the same stuff again? Uh, what question was, what are we putting in place as the county? Because they had stole the tractor and it was, it was my understanding, it was maybe a week or two weeks after y'all had did the layoff down there. And so, I guess somebody, I don't know who, came back and stole the equipment. So, what is in place now to prevent that from happening again as far as the theft of the county equipment, the tractor, unless you, and whatever else they stole?
At, at Gaethers?
No, sir.
Or at the factory show?
At Recreation.
Over, over at City Pond?
Yeah.
They booked in and got.
Which is, yeah, which is in District Four.
He, when he asking the question, what did Dwayne them put in place to make sure it's secure?
Oh, I'd have to find out from them. I know that we've added locks and we've done some additional things over there to try to keep it safe. And actually, and as far as the caretaker, I mentioned that the position was open, but I just got a text from our HR director that that position was filled. But we have had problems in the past with some of our equipment storage, and we've had to redo the locks several times to get stronger things to make sure that we had those things. But.
I had just one suggestion. Why not, is there any way possible we could, we could put a camera down there? Or cameras?
We do use game cameras in several sites. Unfortunately, they get stolen as well. So, we're constantly being challenged with those things, even though we have them up out of sight. People tend to find them.
Commissioner Sanders?
Mine's real simple. How much is the insurance that's being reimbursed to us?
Fifteen thousand.
Thank you. Guys, I seek a motion, please. Sir, can I get a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Sanders. Any more discussion? All in favor? It passed five oh. Thank you. Thank you so much.
I think the budget was up next, but do we need to go zoning, or should we?
We need to. We don't have enough time to do that. We definitely have to go to zoning. Thank you, guys. This is approximately seven twenty-seven. Our zoning hearing starts at seven-thirty. We're going to ask Ms. Judy on her team if you guys will come on up.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners.
Good evening.
Our first item, actually, while we're waiting for the seven-thirty to hit, one of the items that was placed, item number fifteen, about streetlights, that does not require public hearing. So, if you wanted to go ahead and move with that one, we certainly can.
Thank you, ma'am, if you would, please.
Okay, I'm going to let Ms. Applewake present the streetlight petitions to you.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. This is a streetlight petition for Benton Woods Town Homes. It actually goes, it's a contract with the city of Covington. And they're just requesting that we create a district for that.
Thank you. Can you repeat that, please?
Oh, it's a streetlight, a request for Benton Woods Town Home Subdivision. And with the city of Covington.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Apple, where, where is that? Where, what's?
Yeah, it's on Brown Bridge Road, just, yeah, just, just half the city limits.
Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. Let me know, Ms. Judy. I'd like to make a motion to, to approve a streetlight petition that stated, uh, that stated.
Can I get a second, please? It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Mason. Any more discussion? All in favor? Thank you. It passes five to zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. This is approximately seven-thirty and, and again, thank you, ma'am.
So, the first item before you this evening is a rezoning request. And it's located at Smith, at the corner of Smith Store and Salem Road. It's petition number REZ two-one-dash-zero-zero-zero-zero-three. This is located in District Two. And at your table, I did place an email request by the applicant who is here this evening. But they are requesting to table this until the July twentieth meeting in order for them to be able to reach out and address some of the concerns that was raised by the community. There was some concerns expressed during the planning commission meeting that may not have been resolved. And the applicant is wanting to work with the community and try to resolve those before it comes before the score. Again, the applicant is here, but the request is to table the petition until July the twentieth.
Commissioner Mason?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Judy, and thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that we table case REZ two-one-dash-zero-zero-zero-zero-three until July the twentieth.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a second, please? It's been motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Henderson. Any more discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Let's table it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item before you this evening is a conditional use request. This is CUP two-one-dash-zero-zero-zero-zero-two. The proposed use is a convenience store with fast food restaurants. The location is at the corner of Highway eleven and I twenty. The existing zoning, the, the track of the property overall, let me see if I can get to a picture here. The track of the zoning is a forty-six acre site that is zoned both highway commercial and agricultural residential. The request before you tonight is only for ten acres of that site, of which is all zoned highway commercial. So, the thing before you this evening for, for consideration is the conditional use permit. It is in the brick store overlay. It is in both Tier Two and Tier Three of the brick store overlay. However, the project site, the ten acres, is clearly in Tier Two of the brick store overlay. It's located in District One in the Little River Watershed. And the applicant is JPC Design and Construction. And I'm going to go back. I apologize. I wanted to kind of show you in the map that it was duly zoned. But let me go back to the. but let me go back to the, um, actual, um, intent. The applicant's intent is to establish a convenience store with the sale of fuel for motor vehicles and the use of underground fuel tanks in the Little River watershed. The subject site has a total of forty-six point one-two acres and is located on the east side, east side of Georgia Highway eleven and south of I twenty. It is currently undeveloped. The applicant has provided a site plan, a proposed layout and use for the property. While the property is currently zoned AR and CH, the proposed use is located, again, entirely within the highway commercial boundary. The properties located to the west and across Highway eleven and to the south are currently zoned commercial as well, with a mix of both commercial and residential properties adjacent on Highway eleven. This is an overview of the site here showing the entire forty-six acre track. This is the zoning map showing the zoning. Uh, again, the ten acres that's on the north side of the track there is zoned highway commercial. This is the future land use. This is in the development node, which means that the county has identified this area as a changing area that is, um, slated for development. The watershed map shows that we're in the Little River watershed for the project site. The overlay map shows that it's tier two and tier three. Again, tier two is the tier that this project will be, uh, within. And the district commissioner map showing that it is in District One. This is a survey plat of the property. Again, you will see that it intersects on the east side of Highway eleven and south of I twenty there. Um, this is a proposed site plan. Uh, this is a conceptual plan only. When projects come before a board for, uh, zoning petitions, they do have a burden to show conceptually what they would like to do. But these are not finalized plans. Most people do not go to the tens of thousands or more dollars to engineer site plans until they have received some type of formal approval that they should move ahead with the project. Um, this is a rendering of the outside of the building, uh, as proposed by the applicant. And conclusion. The conditional use permit is required due to the sale of fuel for motor vehicles and the use of underground fuel tanks in the Little River watershed. The proposed request appears to be able to meet the standards for the, for the use provided the state waters and wetland area is protected, and the underground tanks shall meet the applicable requirements set by the Georgia Department of Natural Resources Environmental Protection Division. The development of community impact is in regards to the fact that it's a ten acre proposal in the brick store overlay. Board policy has indicated the need to maintain and provide a clear sense of entry at the Highway eleven exit on I twenty and has been very proactive in adopting the brick store overlay district to help protect the scenic character of the area and to encourage quality development. With the incorporation of the recommended condition, staff is of the opinion that the petition is consistent with the policies and intent of the brick store overlay. The recommended conditions. Should this petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved for a conditional use permit for a convenience store with underground fuel tanks on a conditional basis, subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. One, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following development standards. A, provide a minimum of a one-hundred-foot landscaped buffer along the entire frontage of Highway eleven. B, all parking areas shall be of hard surface such as pavement, concrete, or pervious pavers to prevent any dust impacting of neighboring properties. C, in order to protect the fragile wetlands and streams, the property shall comply with Section five-twenty dash zero-one-zero-B requiring a thirty-five natural and undisturbed riparian buffer for stream and wetland area. D, the underground tanks shall meet all applicable requirements set by the Georgia Department of Natural Resources Environmental Protection Division. Tanks are to service twelve motor vehicle pumps only. E, extended parking shall be limited to nine spaces. For the purpose of this condition, extended parking shall be defined as a vehicle remaining in substantially the same location without moving for longer than two hours, to be enforced by the property owner. F, no overnight parking shall be allowed. G, no overnight parking signs shall be erected on the property. H, hours of operation shall be from five AM to eleven-thirty PM for all businesses. I, the buildings shall, the buildings will be four-sided brick with fault shutters and will have a peaked parapet similar to the historic brick store. The brick color and bond style will emulate the actual brick store historic building. I, one, in order to assure compliance, the building rendering must be approved by Development Services prior to the issuance of a building permit. J, developers shall comply with all G-dot requirements, including but not limited to impervious surface setbacks, deceleration lanes, allowed number and locations of entrance and exits from the subject property. K, no above-ground tanks shall be allowed. I do want to check one thing. I thought we had corrected one of those conditions, so I want to check it in the actual packet that we sent. Um, okay, so for condition F. Condition F should read, no overnight customer parking shall be allowed. Um, because this is proposed for both a Dunkin' Donuts and another, um, um, restaurant. Occasionally, like I know for Dunkin' Donuts, my daughter worked for them for a brief while, and the bakers go in about three o'clock in the morning and start baking fresh for each day. So if the, we wanted to make sure it was very clear that the overnight parking applied to a customer parking there, not someone who may be working or cleaning the building. So that condition F will actually read as no overnight customer parking shall be allowed. Um, and I believe that is everything that staff has to offer. If you have any questions, I can certainly try to answer them now or if you'd like to wait till after the public hearing.
Let's wait till after the public hearing.
Thank you.
At this time, we want to open it up to the public, um, the applicant and those in favor. You do have ten minutes tonight to speak in favor. Um, if you would, please come at this time, please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Hello.
Hey, how you doing, sir?
My name is Richard Mylum. I'm general counsel for the, uh, Jones Petroleum Company. We're located in Jackson on Alabama Boulevard. And of course, we're located in Newton County too. We have several, uh, of our stores here. Uh, I've got a few things to, to say about this project, and we very much are asking for your approval. There's only one thing that the board needs to do, uh, in, in our request, and, well, and it's a two-part thing. First, we are asking that you grant us a conditional use permit for the purpose of a convenience store with gas pumps and the installation of underground fuel storage tanks. This is all located in the brick store overlay district on a tier-two ten-acre track. Newton County Water and Sewer Department has already agreed to bring, uh, their services to this site. That's on its way to go to the next exit where they're going to have this big Facebook development. And we're gonna be able to get that, uh, water and sewer there, we believe. We have, uh, agreed to pay fifty thousand dollars toward that project, uh, to Newton County Water and Sewer Authority. This location is on I sub, on I twenty. It is right at the intersection. One of the boundaries is the I twenty, uh, right-of-way. And the other bound, and one boundary is Highway eleven. Uh, we already have brand approval from both Burger King and Dunkin' Donuts to put, uh, their businesses there on either side of a eight thousand, it's approximately eight thousand square foot building. This location is approximately a quarter of a mile from the perimeter college campus, and it, it, it will be the closest places to eat to that college campus. This is definitely not a truck stop. I want to make sure you understand, the, the pumps are under a canopy. The canopy will not take an over-the-road tractor-trailer truck. There's no intention to put, you know, there are different kinds of fuel nozzles and fuel pumps for tractor-trailer trucks, and we're not installing those. Um, we know that we have to have a completely separate kind of approval. We're not asking for that. We're asking to put a convenience store that sells gas. And we will have a diesel pump, but it'll be for just automobiles and, and trucks, trucks, a lot of trucks today use, um, diesel fuel. Our total investment's gonna be about six million dollars in this site. We plan on hiring a lot of people, and I'll get to that in just a moment. Uh, a lot of people for such a small site. Uh, we think we're, if we're doing our dead level best, we'll have about twenty employees there. The rules and regulations of the brick store overlay, the picture you saw is nothing but our standard picture of how we're gonna lay this out. The way the building will look is going, we're gonna work very closely with the zoning office to try to emulate the brick store itself. With the brick, the colors, the brick, the design, as far as the facade and the way this place looks. There have been some changes made in the recommendations since our last meeting. And I want to go over those with you. These recommendations, uh, were discussed at, uh, before the planning commission. First, you'll see in our survey that we're only using about one-third of our ten-acre lot. The reason for that is to avoid the, uh, the creek. It's a wet weather creek that, uh, comes out of the ground and goes off. And you see where it was located, this, the plant that you saw. The smaller, long lines are the creek bed where the, uh, those, those mark the highway water mark of the bank of the creek. The outside of that is the thirty-five-foot mark. And that's what we're trying to stay out of, thirty-five feet from the bank of the creek. So we're only gonna use a little less than a third of our lot. The first thing that they did in the recommendations is recommend a one-hundred-foot buffer. And, uh, buffers normally would apply to the sides and the backs where there are other neighbors. But they're calling it a buffer, but it's actually a setback. A hundred feet takes away our ability to not be on the, uh, creek. We go over to the creek about twenty, twenty-five feet if we go that far. We put the, with the lot, the, we put the lot and put our building site on it, and at fifty feet, we completely miss the thirty-five feet from the creek, and we completely miss, uh, the road. We get fifty feet all the way across, and we're asking you, instead of making it a hundred feet across the front, and this is supposed to be sodded and landscaped, we will keep it looking very nice. We would like, you can see in this drawing that's up here now, it goes over to the creek. If that distance between the first group of piece of pavement and the right-of-way of the Highway eleven, if that is fifty feet, we don't go to the creek. And that's, that's a change we would like for you to make. If we have to go with this, then we will have to go to the Corps of Army, Army Corps of Engineers, try to get some mitigation. That will take six months or longer. Uh, because of the COVID, they're all working from home. It's a very long process to do that, and it'll delay this project by a good bit. They added in number D there that, uh, we're only to have twelve vehicle pumps. Well, that wasn't in there when we were here before, but we would like to have tentative approval of sixteen in case we can put sixteen on the lot. That, with the investment we're making here, we'd like to have sixteen. None of them will be, none of them will be truck diesel, none of them. These will all be for passenger cars or passenger pickup trucks. We have no problem with the, uh, hours of operation. Under C, I mean, E, we were limited to nine spaces. That's a blank that's been filled in since we were here last. It wasn't voted on by the board that was here before. Uh, we think we, we can have up to twenty employees. The only people who are going to be there for more than a couple hours are, are gonna be our employees. We would like to be able to have twenty spaces that our employees can park in. That's the only people who are gonna be there. There will be no overnight parking. We'll be glad to put up no overnight parking signs, and we don't want anybody parking there overnight unless one of, like, like Jonathan said, one of our employees comes in early to start cooking the donuts. And finally, there was a provision, no above-ground tanks allowed. Please specify no fuel tanks. This says no above-ground tanks. There are other things that the tanks hold. We're gonna have two places to cook. We might have propane, a propane tank. We have cooking oil. Cooking oil is generally stored in a tank until it is hauled off, and we don't want to put that in the ground. We would like to have a small tank, which would be above ground, but it would be behind the building, to, to store that until the time that it is ready to be hauled off. The biggest problem is this issue of the fifty feet versus the hundred feet. If we can't get it reduced to fifty feet, then we're going to have to go through mitigation with the Army Corps of Engineers. And not only that, but if we do the mitigation, then we will be on your creek. We don't want to be on the creek. If you look at our site plan, we have pavement in the very front. The building is going to be a long way from where the pavement begins. It's gonna be more than a hundred feet before you even get to the, uh, where the gas tanks are. We just don't want to be required to have the lawn, which is what this fifty feet will be, the lawn go a hundred feet. We're, we're not using the whole lot as it is, and it will be a very nice site, I promise you. Uh, I have with me, if you have any questions, Jeremy Crosby, our construction manager, and Steve Rowland, our engineer. Both have come here to assist in any way they can. Thank you very much for your questions.
Thank you, sir. That portion of our public, um, hearing is closed. We also allow, he took your whole ten minutes, sir. Yeah, yeah, opposition. Hold on one second, let me, let me close that out and open it back up. Uh, that portion of our public hearing is closed. Uh, we also allow ten minutes for those that want to speak, um, opposing this. You also have ten minutes to do so. If you would, please come at this time and state your name, your address for the record, please. Those that want to oppose. Yes, sir, you may come at this time. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, thank you, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Wayne Pugh. I live in River Cove Meadows, uh, social circle, Georgia, across the bridge from this, uh, this development. I was shocked, I guess, right now. I had a lot of stuff sitting on the plate here at a ten, at a hundred-foot setback, but if they're trying to approve fifty, I'm not sure I, uh, I want to go along with, uh, I was really, we were, we're, as our subdivision, we were opposing the truck stop, and then we got that all settled, and we were, we went to the planning board, and we had a good, good meeting there, and we, we're really on board with the convenience store situation. But following the brick store layover was the, um, the biggest hurdle. I think that we were making sure that they followed. And now, uh, that first, the last statement there is gonna change things a little bit, and I'm not so sure that, uh, because of, we feel that this, this. and I'm not so sure that, because of, we feel that this development is going to bring, it's going to be the beginning of the brick store development in our area. And if we don't stand tough on the requirements that was written back in the early nineties for this brick store layover, for this area of our county, we start giving up certain things now, we're going to continue to start giving up certain things. So I get the problem with the creek, and that was one of my questions with the site plan, how they're going to get, how they're going to get that large convenience store, ten thousand square foot or eight, in such a small area before they get to the creek? Don't know how far it is back to the creek, but it doesn't look like it's very, very big enough space to put especially sixteen. It was originally for twelve, now they go into sixteen. Things have changed a little bit. I don't think it's right. I think we should table this thing myself personally till we get the exact planning committee to approve it again. I don't know if they care or not, or how it goes back, but I'm a little shocked because we had this thing all set up, agreed on both sides of the party of defense. Both of us agreed with JP and the association and the community out there in River Cove, not only River Cove, I represent the community itself around and about, but I guess, I'm not real sure here, but how to go about saying I'm not sure I oppose certain things of what's been happening. My whole layout I had here has changed since what just took place, that he's asking for, that he didn't ask for in the planning committee. So my opinion, without having to have all of it specified in the very first stage of planning, they knew the creek was there from the beginning. They knew what they had to get done to accomplish that. They should have measured and seen what they had to have for the brick store layover layout. And that's one of our biggest projects that's going on out there, is we feel that this project is going to be the very first large project for the brick store layover, and it needs to follow the exact regulations of the brick store layover, or it don't need to happen, period. My opinion, and I'm sure my colleagues in the subdivision that I represent and the community out there feels the same way. And you guys did back years ago when you set the rules and regulations up of how that community was supposed to be developed. So with the changes, I think it needs to be tabled, and I think it needs to be thought about, and I think maybe the EPD needs to go out there and look at it, or they need to get the EPD approval of how they can go about setting this large amount of convenience store on this small amount of property because of where the creek and the watershed comes up, because to me, you can't give them permission to do something until all the i's and the t's are crossed. I also think that the buffers should be left natural as much as possible on the front and the rear, and I think we should stand forth on the hundred-and-ten or the hundred-foot setback. I don't think you should change that. That's not, twelve pumps versus sixteen, I don't really think that's a big issue in my opinion, but the hundred-foot setback is going to be the presence of that particular brick store layover. He did mention he's going to leave all the stuff. One of my questions was, is he going to leave all the stuff in the back as natural as possible, which is good. My other question is, the entrance and the exits of this facility, it's right, as he said, it adjacent, or property goes up to the entrance ramp of I-20 going eastbound. There's not a whole lot of space between the expressway and the curve and a hill that you go to on Highway eleven. Are there going to be a traffic light or something there for this traffic to get in and out of? Again, I guess the GDOT has to approve that, so it's not for me to ask, so I can X that one, but I still think it's a safety hazard if it goes too far towards the college or towards Highway eleven, towards the junction on the entrance and the exit of this project. That's all I got to say at this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to oppose tonight?
I'm opposed to the changing of the, absolutely.
We got you.
And then that means I'm opposed to the whole project, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to oppose tonight? Anyone else would like to oppose tonight? That portion of our public hearing is also closed. Mr. Judy, if you would, please come on back up.
Thank you, thank you so much. Commissioner Edwards, I think this is in one of five.
It's in District One.
It's in one, okay.
It's right on the, District One is south of twenty, and District Five is north of twenty.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Judy, so on the first time this came before us, was this Jones Petroleum Construction, JPC Design and Construction, or Jones Petroleum before us before, that came before us before?
I believe both times the applicant was actually Mike Horn, which is the JPC Design, which is the construction part, if I'm familiar enough with their business, but the construction part for Jones Petroleum service stations and so forth.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate for me to ask our county attorney a question at this time?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Megan, given the fact that we have a pending lawsuit with Jones Petroleum, is it a conflict for this board to vote on anything having to do with Jones Petroleum at this time?
It's not a conflict, however, if we do have questions about that litigation specifically, it would be appropriate for us to enter an executive session to discuss if we want to discuss that piece of litigation.
Well, I guess the first question I have is, is the lawsuit contingent, the status of a lawsuit contingent upon what we do here today?
It will certainly be impacted by the decisions that the board makes.
Okay, would it be appropriate for me to ask the applicant something at this time, Ms. Chairman?
Yes. Sir, if you would, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. So, you know, the elephant in the room, the lawsuit, right? What do we, so in order to drop the lawsuit, you want this approval tonight, is that right?
This is an entirely separate request. We can turn down for the truck center, the travel center, which is like the one you have in Bunch County. So this is a wonderful site, it's right next to I-20, it's close to East Street, it's on Highway eleven. So now we're applying for this.
So if we approve this tonight?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
If we approve this tonight, what happens to lawsuits?
Well, counsel, we'll get together and we'll talk about it. There are some other issues in there.
So I have.
Hey, guys, let's state what you're saying.
I have seen documentation that states that if this passes, the lawsuit is dropped, and I believe that was on behalf of Mr. Jones.
Mr. Jones, you're not here. How did this?
Hey, guys.
I don't think we need to opine on what Mr. Jones is indicating as far as his litigation position. As far as what you're indicating here tonight, I think what you're saying to my commissioner is that these items are totally unrelated, so if the board decides tonight to turn this down, or you indicate to us there will be no legal consequences for doing so, or?
Well, as counsel, as you know, the lawsuit is nothing more than an appeal. What you're doing is just like any workers' compensation case or anything else involving a commission. You can get the matter before a judge in the Superior Court who filed a lawsuit. Then it goes through the regular appeal process. We asked for a change in zoning for the entire forty-six acre tract in that other valley. I wasn't hardy to that. I've joined the advocates and the advocates. All I can tell you is, this project, we would like to be judged on some merit. That's what we would like for you to do.
I will tell you that is inconsistent with what we've been told previously. So there's a reason why our commissioners are looking at you this way, because that is not how we've been addressed previously about the project that was before us before and what you're proposing tonight. So that's why you're getting a lot of the doe-eyed stares, and well, that's not what we've been told.
Can you tell me who told you that?
Well, as our department commissioners indicated, I think we remain to believe that the applicant indicated that that was the case, that we look at the smaller project.
My name is Jeremy Crosby. With JPC, it's Mike Horn, worst roommate. I would have been the applicant, not had a discussion with anybody about any of that. The lawsuit is over a rezoned twelve acres of that parcel that is still agriculture. What we're asking before you is staffs have been recommended approval with conditions. It's a totally separate issue from that twelve acres being rezoned into commercial highway.
No, we neither is arguing that, but we're indicating that the proposition that you're putting before us is different than what we've understood, that if tonight the board was willing to work with you all on this matter, that there would be some resolution to conclude any others were put before. Is that not correct? That's not the company's stance at this juncture?
I'm not clear on what you're saying, proposition's different.
That if tonight we approved this smaller mini market, that we have the setbacks back, that we approved up to the sixteen pumps, of course, like you said about the above-ground, the above-ground makes perfect sense, but that that would satisfy JPC such that we would have a dismissal of that little lawsuit. That's, if that is something that someone has misunderstood along the way, or is not accurate, I mean, now's the time and place to say it, because that is, well, the impression we have.
There's a totally separate issue. One, rezoning twelve acres to commercial highway to make the entire forty-six acres commercial highway. This is simply a conditional use for the store and gas pumps and underground stores on a ten-acre tract. We currently.
It's already zone commercial.
Yeah, it's already zone commercial. We're just asking for the conditional use for underground storage tanks. So, and I think Ms. Johnson, you're familiar with this, too, they're totally separate issue, rezoning of that twelve acres to make the whole parcel, commercial highway, and then this conditional use. We only have the ten acres under contract right now to purchase from, so, and that's, we're just asking for the conditional use tonight on that.
Commissioner Edwards, what I'm hearing is inconsistent with the proposition that you were bringing forward, that we could be finished and done with this. That's clearly not the case.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not familiar with who said that.
I'm doing it, counsel. I'm in charge of the leading part, which consists of three people, brother, and the parents, and the court. That hasn't been told to me, and I've only been there five weeks. That, all I understand is it's an appeal from what happened here before, and so therefore, it's a debate right now. We're proceeding with this to see if we can get this done. We would like to get into business. We'd like to come and build a nice business there at the intersection of I-20 and Highway eleven. That's what we'd like to do. Do not be asked and changed the zoning of that, because it's already zone appropriately for this. The only problem we're having is with the hundred-foot setback, which, of course.
Sorry, he said it to Mike. Oh, I'm sorry.
The, it's all based on a, in my opinion, a misreading of the overlay. I've read your ordinance, and it seems to me that they're confusing a setback and a buffer. A buffer is a separation between neighbors on the side or in the back. A buffer is not in the front. A front is a setback. And the, your ordinance, I'm starting to be fumbling with my papers. Your ordinance says that for the setback on Highway eleven is a hundred feet north of Highway two seventy-eight and fifty feet south of Highway two seventy-eight. And buffers are fifteen feet in this area. That's what a buffer is. So, I mean, what we're dealing with is these recommendations, your board clearly has made them, so we're trying to work with them as best we can.
Thank you, sir. Jeremy, could you repeat your last name, please?
Mylum. Oh, this is.
Jeremy Crosby.
Awesome. Commissioner Edwards, go ahead.
Okay, so read the setback requirements on the, on north of two seventy-eight again.
All right. The setback, what setback, first, what your ordinance says setback is, is the distance between the right-of-way of the public highway and the front wall of the building.
Right. What our Dollar General, our Dollar General already abides by that down there, so I'm familiar with that, so.
And it's, you can put pavement on the setback. What this is, is your ordinance, I'm looking at the wrong paper, back to this. Your ordinance says that the setback on Highway eleven is a hundred feet north of two seventy-eight and fifty feet south of two seventy-eight. Setback, the distance between the right-of-way of the road and the front wall of the building.
Okay.
And you can pave that area.
We can, but we don't have to.
No, you don't, that's right.
So let me, let me ask you this, and I'm going to, there's another elephant in the room.
Commissioner, let me let Ms. Judy speak. Setback.
Just for one moment, let me, let me explain what condition one A is. Condition one A is a condition. It is not a section of the ordinance. It is not referring to a section of the ordinance. It is not a setback. There is some, the way the ordinance was crafted in the language, there is confusion. If you went to court on a setback as to what that would mean, it could be interpreted the way that the applicant is indicating that it can be. But this condition is not in the ordinance. This is a condition that you have the right to put on any zoning that mitigates the development itself. When we did the Dollar General that is located further down on Highway eleven near Highway two seventy-eight, we did a one-hundred-and-fifty-foot, no impervious surface setback. This one, we are asking to keep in line with what the intent of the ordinance was. The intent of the ordinance was to keep everything one-hundred-foot setback, but because we didn't use it as buffer and said setback, that could be challenged in court. This condition cannot be challenged in court. We have stated that this would be a one-hundred-foot buffer. In reference to what we're here tonight to speak on, and I do, I spoke quite a while with our land use attorney in the past few weeks in regards to this. It is not a conflict for us to vote on this. This is a separate petition from the lawsuit. There is no reason why this could not move forward, should this board want to move it forward. You also have the right to place conditions on this. You could change conditions. I was a little confused over how propane wasn't fuel, because we said no above-ground, and he asked to put fuel tanks in there. Propane is fuel. So if we put a condition, no above-ground fuel tanks, then it will also take out his ability to have propane tanks. So maybe that should be wordsmith a little more. But what I would like to just bring everybody back around to is that what's before you tonight, the only thing we can vote on tonight, or table, is a conditional use request for underground tanks and the cell of fuel. And should this board choose to approve, you can approve with these conditions, change conditions, added conditions, taking away conditions, or you can choose to deny it. But if you choose to deny this, you must have a legitimate reason for this conditional use, not from something previously. That's the only thing I just want to remind the board about, is that this is a zoning petition, and if you approve or deny- That's the only thing I just want to remind the board about, is that this is a zoning petition, and if you approve or deny, if you deny, you have to state a valid reason for denying.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. If you guys will come back up for one second, please.
Guys, listen, if we, we want to make sure we stay on this topic.
I got you. I got you. So, um, let, let me hit the reset button for one second. Mr. Pugh mentioned how we had all come to reason with this, and, uh, I believe that there's a need out there for the services you are trying to provide. I know that. Um, I look forward to hopefully having a Dunkin' Donuts and a Burger King, whatever else is out there. But we, uh, so, so the community had come together and agreed on this, and we were, I believe, we were all set to move forward, make some progress on that. I ask a few questions to begin with for clarification purposes only. Um, I didn't mean to sound adversarial. I know I did, but, um, so, but I gotta ask you another question, okay? So I know you're representing the Jones family. Do you know of or have any, any knowledge of the intent to ever turn this into a travel center or truck stop? That's a yes or no question.
Well, I can tell you that, uh, they are building these travel centers in many places. I can also tell you that this company is going to last longer than Mr. Jones. Uh, he's got three children who are working in the company too. They're all officers. So is it ever not, I will say this, not without the approval of either this board or the next board or the next board or a board 50 or 100 years from now? It cannot be, there cannot be anything like our travel center without approval by this board. And we do have the right to apply for it.
I understand.
If, but obviously, since it was so roundly denied last time, that's not a present intent. If you're asking, is that our present intent? No, that's not. What we're trying to do is get this zoning approved to see if we can do this.
I, I didn't ask you, was your present intent. I asked you, did you have any knowledge of any, of future intent? And you answered my question. So, um, uh, motion to table for 60 days, Mr. Chairman, so we can get more, further clarification on this whole deal.
Uh, can I get a second? Um, thank you, sir. Uh, thank you, guys, for being here. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards to table this for 60 days, and then it's seconded by, um, Commissioner Sanders. Uh, thank you, sir, for being here. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, sir. Thank you. Again, it's been motioned that we tabled this by Commissioner, um, Edwards and seconded by Commissioner Sanders. Any more discussion? All in favor? Thank you. It's tabled for 60 days. Uh, Ms. Judy.
Okay, our last petition before us this evening is REZ 21-000004. This property is located on City Pond Road and Highway 142. It's approximately 35 acres in size. It is currently zoned M2 heavy industrial. It's located in District 4, and it has a proposed zoning to go to RMF, which is multifamily residential. And the petitioner is Mr. Michael Kennedy of Jim Chapman Communities. On March 16th, 2021, the board history, on March 16th, 2021, the Board of Commissioners approved the request for a future land use amendment. Case number FLU 21-000001 to amend the future land use from industrial to HDR, high-density residential. On May 25th, 2021, the Planning Commission recommended approval of this petition with staff's conditions by a vote of 5-0. Applicants intent, their intent is to seek a rezoning to RMF in order to establish a townhome community. The site plan analysis, based on the site plan submitted on April 6th, 2021 by the applicant to the Department of Development Services, staff offers the following considerations. The site plan indicates the opportunity to develop 226 residential units ranging in size from 1,000 square feet to 1,500 square feet. Con- conclusion, provided staff's recommended conditions are incorporated into the development of the site, the proposed use is consistent with the policies and intent of the comprehensive plan and with approved zonings in the area. Recommended conditions, should this petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved RMF, multifamily residential, conditional subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. One, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following development standards. Upon development of the property, the applicant will provide satisfactory ingress and egress for the site to be approved by GDOT for the Georgia Highway 142 and the Newton County Transportation Department for City Pond Road. No more than the proposed 226 townhome units. A minor plat of the newly created parcels must be obtained prior to any development. Two, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following. A, to the site plan and legal description received by the Department of Development Services on April 6th, 2021. Said site plan is conceptual only and must meet or exceed the requirements of the zoning ordinance and these conditions prior to the approval of a land disturbance permit. Unless otherwise noted herein, compliance with all conditions shall be in place prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy. Three, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following development standards. Submit, A, submit appropriate plans, plats, including stormwater plan to be reviewed and approved by Development Services, Public Works, Newton County Fire Department, Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Committee, and the Newton County Water and Sewerage Authority. This is an overview of the aerial of the property. Everywhere you see one of the yellow squares is one of the properties under consideration that make up this 35 acres. This is a zoning of the property, which does show that the property is currently zoned M2 heavy industrial. Our future land use map indicates all the parcels are, uh, under this request are now under a future land use map for high-density residential. And this is the concept plan that the applicant has, uh, presented, um, for the proposal. It does have, uh, two entrance and exit, one off of, actually, it has three. Nope. Let me get oriented. It actually has two. It has one off of, um, Highway 142 that's going to meet, I believe that's, uh, the road that goes behind Maryvale there, Airport Road perhaps. And then it has another entrance that's further down on City Pond Road. This property does abut the, um, city of Covington where the, um, Three Ring Studios is currently, uh, developed at. And from this point forward is the applicant's slide. Uh, I'm happy to answer any questions, or if you want to wait till after the public hearing. Again, this is District 4.
Thank you. Thank you. We're gonna wait till.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We're gonna open it up now, um, for those, the applicant and those that want to speak in favor tonight. Um, you may come at this time. You have 10 minutes to do so. Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Uh, good, uh, good evening. My name is Jim Chapman. Uh, Jim Chapman Communities. I live at 1956 Riddlemore Row in Smyrna, Georgia. Uh, I have a presentation up here, but also I have the paper copy, if I could pass these around. Great, thank you. Um, my company, Jim Chapman Communities, has been, uh, in business for 23 years in Atlanta. I grew up in Decatur originally, uh, live in Smyrna at the moment. Uh, my office is in bindings. Uh, for the past 15 years, I've created a series of active adult, age-restricted communities that were for-sale communities, typically gated, uh, amenitized with clubhouses, pools, dog parks, and they focused on building ranches and selling to folks over 55. Uh, I morphed that concept into a build-to-rent community concept that retained the idea of the gate systems, the amenities, uh, including pool and dog park. Uh, some have walking trails. Uh, but they all focus on, uh, a master on main product, uh, that is not only suitable, uh, to an active adult or a senior, but to, uh, folks in their twenties, thirties, or forties who just don't, uh, care to climb stairs to get to their master bedroom, et cetera. Um, and so we have created a series of age-targeted communities. This is some, uh, what I like to call shameless self-promotion on myself and my company, some leadership roles. Uh, I was recently president of the Greater Atlanta Home Builders Association. I'm currently president of the State of Georgia Home Builders Association, et cetera. Um, won Builder of the Year a number of times and Community of the Year. Just to show you, I hope that you understand I'm not a fly-by-night developer builder. I take what I do and my service to my industry very seriously. Uh, a couple of pages on just some background information on build-to-rent communities, uh, which I'll get into more as we go through. Uh, these are attached, one and one-half story ranch cottages featuring light-filled spacious floor plans at minimum of one-car garage. We do have two-car garage units, uh, still has a master all main, covered front and/or rear porches with individual driveways. Because all exterior maintenance is professionally managed, owners can enjoy a true lock-and-leave lifestyle, a true maintenance-free lifestyle for, to pursue hobbies, traveling, family time, and more. Uh, what a lot of people do and don't understand is that there is a barbell of demographics at the moment. You have on one end, the baby boomers, and on the other end, their children, the millennials. Uh, they are the largest demographic, and they each want the same thing. They want a maintenance-free lifestyle. They don't want to mow the grass if they don't have to, would love not to maintain the unit. This type of, uh, living offers that. Um, we also serve as the general contractor. My firm does. We do all the development, uh, and all the vertical construction ourselves. Uh, we don't farm that out. Uh, we do have subs that work for us, but we manage the entire process. And our, uh, typical resident is either an active adult, a senior, or a, someone in their twenties, thirties, forties that I call high-level workforce. Um, our first tenant in our first project, nine miles west of Athens, downtown Athens, which was not developed for, uh, what I call the kids, college students. Uh, we had less than a handful there. Uh, our first app, our first resident was a, uh, unfortunately, a new, newly divorced man, 40, uh, whose, uh, wife retained the home. He wanted a nice place to live to receive his six- and four-year-old daughter, who did not live with him, and he was able to rent a home from us without having to create a down payment. I call him, and he makes $90,000 a year. So I call him high-level workforce. Um, cottages at Ridge Point is what I'm just referencing. Uh, it was our first deal, 216 units, age-targeted in Athens. Broke ground in November of 18, finished in February of '21. Two and three-bedroom plans available. One-level living built to an all-program standards. All is a livable lifestyle home. You can look it up on that website. It means all the interior doorways are three foot wide, tall toilets, um, a zero-step entry from every garage into the unit. Um, so a lot of universal design stuff for folks. Um, units have a one-car attached garage, and all of them have attic storage upwards of 80 to 100 feet, uh, square feet. It has a 3/4-inch wood deck floor, so it's not flimsy. Amenities included a clubhouse, pool, and a dog park, as I've mentioned before. And then I do outsource the professional leasing and management to a firm that manages 30,000 units across the southeast called Range Water. They're headquartered here in Atlanta. Uh, as of May, uh, that was 98% occupied. Um, it was two bedrooms and three bedrooms. This is true of what I propose. Everything I'm discussing here is identical to what I propose. I'm just giving you examples of what I've done in the past. Uh, 1,000 square foot is the two-bedroom. The three-bedroom's $1,450. The third bedroom and bath are up in the attic. I add an internal staircase to get to that. Still, it's two bedrooms, two baths on the main, just like the two-bedroom unit is. Uh, the rents achieved there right now are 1,600, and the three-bedrooms are going for $2,225. These are high-level rentals. This is not Section 8. This is not low-income housing. Uh, average occupant, 1.85. Only 11% of occupants, 18 or younger. 41.6 is the average age. Most apartments are 25, 26 years. Our average income was $108,000. We underwrite to 62. 63.7% single divorced or widowed, and 38% actually owned a home and sold it prior to moving in with us. These are renters by choice. Cottages at Dawson Ridge, same exact built, same program. Uh, as of right now, we've been leasing, actively leasing it for six and a half months. We're still under construction. Uh, we, we, uh, don't deliver the entire second half of 193 units until September, October, November, and we're already 80% pre-leased. Uh, same exact formula with the bedroom, square footage, and, uh, the rents are not quite as high there yet. Uh, same basic demographics, 1.95 occupants versus 1.85, 40 years of age versus 46, 129,000 average income versus 109, 64% single divorced widow versus 67, and 33% owned a home. Uh, these units, the size of them and who we cater to, uh, we do not have a lot of children living with us. This is pretty much an adult, uh, community, no matter how old you are. These are just some charts, uh, displaying some of the income and relationship status that you can look at. Uh, these are typical gated entries to our communities, very high-end. We propose to do the same thing here. Uh, our clubhouse and pool, pool was taken before we got the picture, before we got the pool furniture, so it looks a little stark, but we have pool furniture and leaves hadn't come out on the trees yet. The interiors of the professionally decorated clubhouse has a catering kitchen, a leasing center. We have leasing and management offices within the clubhouse. So we have them there on a daily basis. We also have two maintenance men there on a daily basis. First thing they do in the morning is do a trash run, which means they, they drive their little golf cart around picking up trash on the community, which is very little to begin with, which is making sure the place is spick and span, and a workout facility. Uh, these are some of the exteriors. All of these units, there's no vinyl, uh, no aluminum soffits. It's all hardy-based materials. Uh, vinyl-clad windows. Uh, it's a real maintenance-free, bulletproof exterior. Uh, interiors, uh, are, are just fabulous, live great. Uh, and then some of these are our floor plans, which you can study, that just back up exactly what I've been saying with the two bedrooms, two baths at around 1,000 square feet.
Sir, you have a minute left.
I'm sorry.
You have a minute left.
Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and finish. Thank you.
Are you finished?
Yeah, yeah. I was, I had a couple of floor plans left to show. That's it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you, sir. If anyone, anyone else want to speak in favor, you have 34 seconds to do so. 34 seconds to do so. 34 seconds, sir. 34 seconds.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Alfred Cook, and I'm the owner of that property out there, and we are definitely for this because, like I said in the other meetings, you can't stop projects.
Thanks, sir. You got 26 seconds.
Lifelong residence. This fits in with the, the Newton County Development Authority's advertisements, great tax base, uh, a great developer coming. I'm certainly for it. I've lived there. I've owned my property over 30 years, long time. All, lived in Newton County all my life, and, um, I support this.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else? Six seconds. Anyone else? Thank you. Uh, that portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow 10 minutes for those that want to speak. We also allow ten minutes for those that want to speak opposing this. You may come at this time. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. Anyone want to oppose tonight? No, no, no. I've got one. We got one.
Good afternoon. Archie Shepherd, nine-one-six-nine, Vittus Drive, Covington, Georgia. I'm not here to oppose it. I'm wanting to get some more understanding. If this road, is this the road where the property estate, City Pond Road, and one forty-two? City Pond Road would not be able to handle the traffic coming out of there. So I think the zoning could probably clear this up. If it's just the back of the town center, is this the back of the town center, cover the town center where this department's going to be at? If it is, traffic already is coming from one forty-two down City Pond Road. And City Pond Road is not able to handle all of this traffic, which is going to come over to Emery Street. And we're already seeing the traffic increase on Emery Street. So I'm not here to oppose it. I just need some more understanding of how this is going to work out because the City Pond Road is not going to be able to handle the traffic coming out of one forty-two over there. And that's what I'm going to get some understanding about. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
David Mock, Airport Road. You're saying that the road into this will be right across from Airport Road. I live on Airport Road right behind Maryville, and the school's right down the road. When I come out in the morning going to work, take a left, I can sit there ten, fifteen minutes to get out of my road. Ever since the studio's been put in, there's been numerous wrecks out there. I noticed last night another set of skid marks went off the road into a driveway there. It can't handle more out there. I moved out there to get away. I lived here in the city. I moved out there to our house on Airport Road, get away from all the neighborhoods and add more out there. When the road can't handle it, it's just not going to work.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone else? That portion of our public hearing is closed as well. Ms. Judy, if you will come back up, we're going to call on Commissioner Henderson. Commissioner Henderson?
I had a question from Ms. Judy. The question is, what type of road improvements might the auto houses do we have that way? And I also just want to add to a side note. The City Covington built up the Three Ring Studios, and there wasn't a, not one contact to me who represented the entire area, including on the City of Covington. Said, "What you think about the road and the excess traffic, or the people who live there?" You know? And so if any, what are we asking them to do? We know the D cell lane that gets out of Auto One Forty-two, we know something right there. Or is there any other on City Pond Road itself, building up to the fault?
Yes, sir. First of all, if I can kind of touch a little bit on what Mr. Shepherd was asking about. If you'll look at this map right here, the area that's in that purple color, that is the City of Covington's property. And the county actually abandoned a portion of City Pond Road that goes that entire length of where that upside-down L is. If you see where the brown is, those are the parcels under request. Thank you. Oh, wait, can I, do I have a, nope. Okay, that's the parcels under request. The property is right under that where you see the white line through it, right under it. But yes, nope, right there. Little further down, little further. Okay, right there. Where you see the line, that's the area of City Pond that has been abandoned. So that road is no longer a through road. The only properties that would be affected on City Pond by this are those handful of properties that's located in between the brown parcels under request and Highway One Forty-two, which I think there's a total of four parcels there. And that top parcel being one of them is some type of utility that sits right there at the corner of City Pond Road. So this traffic will not be coming down City Pond Road and going further down to come out on One Forty-two. And also, the applicant may be able to clear this up a little better as well. But the two entrances, the primary entrance would be for, if you're going to visit someone who lived there and you will be able to get in on the One Forty-two, but the highway, the City Pond Road is for the residents only. That is a gated entrance that only if you live within the apartment complex. If you're coming to visit someone, you would have to enter off of Highway One Forty-two. Now for road improvements. Our ordinance requires, actually it's the development regulations, that if you're doing a project on a county road that is unimproved, that you can be subject, not shall, but you can be subject to any road improvements that may be necessary on the portion of that road that you would be using. So for the county road, we have something in place that could potentially redo or make that road improvements for the three or four parcels that's on the left-hand side, as well as what would serve the gated community. On the Highway One Forty-two side, that would be subject to the Georgia Department of Transportation, but at a minimum, it would be a deceleration lane. It could possibly require a left-turn lane. But that road, because it's a G-dot road, the county would not have real over say in that. We would have to, we have to accept what Georgia Department of Transportation would require.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Ms. C. This is where I went out personally and talked to the residents. You know, former Commissioner Alfred Cook, who also sit up in his, I see them, you know, for years back. And Pastor Payne, whom I had the privilege of knowing for years. And also, I visited the people. And most of the people that I visit who live in the area, they want to get rid of their property so that they could move on with their lives. And, but to make a long story short, I think, I believe this is a good project forward there. And I remember my friend, Commissioner Sanders, what she was saying. And we talked to her a little sidebar, and she said, "Well, who can afford it?" I said, "Well, there's a lot of people, and you kind of can afford a heap of places." And we think, we think that'll be good. Those apartments will be good houses, will be good for Newton County and the residents over in that particular area. And for where Mr. Mock live at, it's behind Maryville. I've been there too. And I understand the congestion, and I was hoping, you know, we know the schools there. And we know in schools be a lot of people, they bring their children in and out. So I guess the question is, should we stop this project? And was, the most time you go to board education and talk about something, they're very disgusted. And it hit the gallows, bam, and you're through with it. Here you have the opportunity to come out and counter, state, and talk about what you believe we should do. But in this case, I think this is a good project for Newton County. So, Mr. Chairman, having said a little bit, something along with what I said, I would like to make a motion to approve case R E Z two-one that's zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-four. Make, I'd like to approve with their recommendations.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a second, please? Second. Thank you, sir. It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any more discussion? Commissioner Sanders?
I just want to find out, I don't know if you know the numbers, Judy. What is the, Commissioner, what is the average income in that area?
Mr. Chapman came was about seven thousand a year, a year income. And what he had stated and talked about, not this particular meeting, but the last one, where he had stated he was trying to get the people at Three Horse Studio, Three Ring Studio, some of the people who want to live in, to actually live in those houses. Now, as you said it, I couldn't afford to live there, but because I can't, I'm not going to stop you.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Pastor Five Zero. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Judy. Yeah, I'm going to go back to finance. I think Mr. Kerr has something that he wants to be actually say.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Based on the earlier discussion during the public hearing, I'd like to ask that the Board postpone the adoption of the budget until we would conduct, actually, we would need to conduct the new hearings based on the changes that we would need to make on that and for you all to consider that. So I'd recommend that we do that and hold the first of the public hearing for the new, for those budget changes to be held on July twentieth at the meeting at six P M. on July twentieth. We hold our first budget hearing, and then we'll provide the Board with the remainder of that schedule for the, for the budget adoption, for the second hearing and adoption.
Any question, guys? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Those change, we do a consensus of those changes or those just during discussion?
My understanding is that the Board, the consensus was to leave the pay increases in the budget, but to find an equal amount of reductions in the budget to those pay increases from that, the difference between three-and-a-half and four-and-a-half percent.
So when we, when we changed, we leave those pay increases in, which I think we should. But what, we know exactly what we've taken out. Other words, you're going to bring them back somewhere. We got your pay increase.
Yes, no.
Know exactly what we're taking out.
Yes, sir. We'll have that for you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Can I get a motion to table that until July twentieth meeting?
Sumu, it's stated by Chairman.
Thank you. It's been motioned that we table this by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? Stand tables.
Thank you. Next, and then we'll, now the next thing we need to do, Mr. Chairman, is to adopt the resolution continuing the operation, temporarily continuing operation of the twenty-twenty-one fiscal year budget.
Yes, sir. Can I get a motion?
Need to adopt that resolution.
Can I get it? It's been motioned by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is human resources. Propose F Y twenty-twenty-two holiday calendar, Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What you have before you is a list of the F Y twenty-two, is the F Y twenty-two holiday calendar, the days and the dates listed along with the personal floating holidays.
Thank you, sir. You want to ask about the Fourth of July?
Oh, yes, I think there was a question, too, is whether or not. The next scheduled board meeting is July the sixth, or July fourth holiday. Because July fourth falls on Sunday, the July, and we would be taking the holiday on July fifth, Monday. So our next board meeting would be scheduled to July sixth. And I had mentioned to the chairman whether to, that we probably needed to see whether or not the Board wanted to meet on July sixth as regularly scheduled. I know some of you may or may not be out of town, and so that, we didn't want to bring that question up tonight, too.
I'm going to pull the Board, Commissioner Edwards.
Might be thirteen, one week later. Or, or, how about we not have like that first meeting in the month?
Well, the way we normally do it, we normally have one meeting in July. So, I mean, it's totally a board pleasure how we all want to do it. One meeting. Commissioner Mason, Commissioner Sanders. One meeting. Commissioner Henderson? Wow. Commissioner Cowan, one meeting. Thank you. So we need to add that into the resolution?
Yes, sir. I believe you would need to do that, to adopt this. If the Board wants to adopt this holiday calendar and then to cancel the first meeting of July.
Guys, I seek a motion that we adopt the holiday calendar and also include that we only have one meeting, which would be the last meeting in July, if somebody could do that.
Mr. Chairman, I like the motion that we adopt the B O C calendar as described by the county manager, and that we only have the single meeting in the month of July.
Thank you, sir. I get a second. Thank you. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? No, go ahead. Commissioner Henderson?
Well, the question I have is that we know that the June, fifteen-hundred off of Juneteenth, they were rescinded by the commissioners. Excuse me. So the date, the holiday, or pay holiday, or floating holiday, have, was that also dealt with?
Yeah, there was a personal holiday added so that people could take Juneteenth, yes.
Okay.
If they decide.
Anyone else? All in favor? Thank you, Pastor Five Zero. Next is Newton County Sheriff Office requests approval of its law enforcement liability insurance, quote, Mr. Kerr.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, let me see if I can find it. I don't think I have anything on this. Let me find the, this is for renewal of their liability insurance, the annual renewal. It is a budgeted item, and you can see the cost there is two-hundred, excuse me.
Two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand.
I'm sorry, yes, two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand dollars, two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand and one dollar and twelve cents.
Any question? I seek a motion, please. I'm sorry. Yes, it is item fourteen.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, one dollar and one cent.
Twelve.
Twelve cents.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Thank you, Pastor Five Zero. Next on the agenda, citizen comments. At this opportunity, we let citizens come up and make comments. You got three minutes to do so. If you would, please come and state your name and address for the record, please. You may come at this time. You may come at this time. Thank you. Commissioner Cowan? Comment.
I don't have you.
Thank you. Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, just one quick uh comment. And maybe a question I don't do it. I heard we talked a little bit about Juneteenth, Juneteenth Day and vacation and, and a sidebar conversation occasionally say something to one another. And he said floating holiday, does it has the name on it, Juneteenth Day? I'm asking. Because I think that was part of the fight for Juneteenth Day was, yeah, was to be uh, uh was to be recognized by the county as a holiday. And for the employers who may want to take it good uh of whatever, and the ones who didn't, then they didn't have to. But it's, you know, soon or later, we're gonna have to change. And what I mean by change, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to make sure that everybody, all of us are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, uh Commissioner Sanders.
Yes, I would like to um announce the uh Newton Community Summer Workout Series with myself and my friends. We'll be hosting at the West Side Precinct. At the Sheriff Office, we're gonna be providing free fitness from cycling. I'll be teaching the cardio kickboxing classes and some of my other friends teaching zumba and so forth. So that's from January twenty sixth through August twenty eighth. Feel free to come out, the classes are free on, starting on Saturdays at ten o'clock. You have to register because we have a company that's bringing out cycling bikes, so they're only gonna be a certain amount. So you could register at commissioner sanders dot com to make sure you do that. Everyone has to sign a workout waiver, even though it's free, but we wanna make sure that we're protected. Also on June nineteenth, we know that's Juneteenth Day, nine A M is the parade and all the festivities will happen at Legion Fields as well as the Miss Juneteenth pageant and so forth. So please come out and support the activities this weekend.
Thank you, um Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um I just wanted to um remind everybody, um we are gonna be having a free food giveaway uh at Denny Dobbs Park on this coming Thursday um starting at two o'clock P M. Uh so if you know anyone uh in the area in Newton County, uh that can actually benefit um from that free food, uh we just asked um you to come out at Denny Dobbs Park at two o'clock on Thursday. Uh I'll be out there, um and we'll have a host of individuals out there helping, volunteering to actually help our community um for those that are in need of food. Thank you.
Thank you, uh Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, nothing but the reminder of the June twenty sixth um District One cleanup. It was, it was postponed from early May, I believe, because of rain, believe that or not. So um that'll be June twenty sixth at Al Kobe High School at nine A M. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Guys, there's no executive session tonight, so I seek a motion that we adjourn. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. All in favor? All in favor? Thank you, it passes. Thank you, five to zero.